All right. On this meeting to order, this is a Select Board and Planning Commission meeting. Agenda, change the agenda of Borderville Cell phone power public comment adjournment. Asking at this moment to add, change this agenda. A little more depth, if you have. Need motion to change the agenda. Recording one? Hi, hey, is anyone without a second?
A second.
Yes, they've taken that. Any more discussion? And having none, all those in favor following changes, can you probably say an aye?
Aye.
All those who told say aye. All right, so we have the updated 222nd agendas. First on the agenda will be Borderville Telecommunications Tower introduction by Industrial Tower and Wireless. Comments, we will try to hold them for two minutes. Borderville, next will be Borderville Telecommunications Tower Public Comment. Comments will also try to be held for two minutes. And approximately 7:15, these two boards will go into executive session for the purpose of discussing negotiations which premature public knowledge may compromise position municipality. And then we'll look at the 7:30 adjournment. All right, so the purpose of tonight's meeting is to allow the public to comment on the proposed telecommunications tower project located on Borderville Road. We want to stress that this is a meeting, not a hearing, as there will be no sworn testimony given tonight, only comments. Comments will be limited to two minutes, as we will try to get everyone's slate this evening. There will be no comment or rebuttals. Public comments must be addressed to the board as a whole and not to any individual or members of the public. Members of the public must be acknowledged by the board before speaking. We ask that all comments be respectful and at no point will any shouting or yelling be tolerated or you will be asked to leave. And at any point if this meeting is to get out of hand, we will adjourn and the meeting will be over. We respectfully understand everyone's viewpoint from all parties involved. The Select Board and Planning Commission can only issue comments to the Public Utility Commission if they so choose. Local zoning regulations do not apply because industrial wireless teleology is applying to the Public Utility Commission through the process described in 30 BSA 248A. Subsection H of the statute reads clear, "This type of application divests Development Review Board of Jurisdiction, conduct the permit process according to municipal zoning bylaws." The relevant portion of subsection H reads, "H, exemptions from other law. One, an applicant whose procedure provided in this section should not be required to obtain a permit or permit amendment or other approval under the provisions of 24 BSA Chapter 117 or 10 BSA Chapter 151. For the facilities subject to the application or to a certificate of public good issued pursuant to this section, this exemption from obtaining a permit or permit amendments under 24 BSA Chapter 117 shall not affect a substantial difference to be given to a plan or recommendation based on local land use bylaw under subdivision C2 of this section." Zoning local, local zoning powers call under 24 BSA Chapter 117. At this time, I'd like anybody who has not signed in to make sure they sign in before leaving, do so. And when it comes time for comments, we would like to have the local residents, the butters being the first in line to do any comments and then any outside the lines, so forth, because we don't know how long we're going to be able to go through this. And they are definitely the ones that should be first and foremost to be heard. All right, so first bullet item would be the Borderville Telecommunications Tower introduction by Industrial Tower and Wireless. Who is speaking on every dial?
I will start. My name is Brian Sullivan from the firm of MSK Friends in Borlton. We'll start by introducing the other members of our team. Louis Hodgins is an engineer with the firm of P. Boys &amp; King, who works out of their south program in office. Sandy Galamath, Kevin Mulaney, and Eric Calio are all with Industrial Tower and Wireless, working out of their Massachusetts office. And then we have Mr. Don Hayes, who just turned his camera on, who is an outside consultant that Industrial has retained to provide answers to questions regarding exposure to radio waves that would endanger this tower. And then just a quick introduction, because I know your time is limited and I want to respect that. Industrial Tower and Wireless, new to Vermont. It is trying to build a network in Vermont. It is doing so by constructing a series of towers. We have so far received approval for a tower in Fairbets and one in Eden. This would be the third tower. There are others that are going to apply for PUC. Industrial Tower and Wireless has two functions in this industry, which is kind of unusual to think. The first is that it holds a license from the Federal Communications Commission to provide its own two-way radio service. For those of you who remember when Nextell was an independent company before it turned into Sprint, the service that Industrial provides is very similar to what Nextcell uses. And you might recall that Nextell kind of carved out a niche market with businesses that use their communication services as a way of kind of having dispatch, communication between the office and the technicians or having the order called. So that, that's the radio service that Industrial offers. Industrial, as the name implies, Industrial Tower and Wireless is also a company that builds towers for the benefit of public companies. So in this particular example, and others in Vermont as well, Industrial would build a tower both for its own use and for the potential future use of the more well-known participants in the industry, including Verizon, AT&amp;T, and T-Mobile. Those are the three biggest players in the industry and would certainly be the ones that Industrial would expect would have the most interest in locating and providing this facility. But they haven't admitted to do that yet. So the application that we filed with the Public Utility Commission only covers the equipment that Industrial itself used. Therefore, the only antennas shown on the tower are the industrial antennas. The only equipment cabinets within the proposed fence compound are the cabinets that Industrial uses. If, as we hope, when the tower is built, those other carriers would like to co-locate at it, they would then go back to the Public Utility Commission to seek for a man, a certificate of public good, if that would be the issue.
I just want to speed it up here, we're way over our limit here.
Okay, okay, so one last thing, and that is, we have started, as you know, the process of applying to the Public Utility Commission. The Public Utility Commission's D.R. application complete and has set a deadline of July 12th to receive comments, requests for hearings, motions to intervene, and other items listed in their determination completely. And with that, I'm done with my remarks. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. So the public has up to July 12th deadline to respond to PUC, is that what you're saying?
The public, as well as the town, the regional planning commission, different agencies of the state of Vermont, all of the parties that document this application.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Not really redlining. All right, so we're going to move on now to now allowing public comments. We'll try to honor the two minutes. And like I stated earlier, I'd like to state your name and where you live. It'd be great to have the local people doing the comments first, if all is possible. Wouldn't want them to leave this meeting and now have to stay in your comment period tonight. Be respectful of that. And on that, I will open it up to the public. And I don't know if we want to have the list around, see who wants to go first, we can look at it up here if there's five, 10 people on, put it on the list, or...
We should have a list.
We don't have a signup list.
It's just a signup list.
Right.
Somebody wants to start, raise your hand and...
If no one wants to say anything, we have a group of the Borderville neighbors that created a PowerPoint. Can we present that if no one else wants to say anything?
No, I'm still as a comment period tonight, and that's what we're looking for, is comments.
Okay, we just, we kind of came as a group and didn't, didn't know that it would be a two-minute limit for each person.
Still, it's open for comments individually, as a whole, if you want to do it as a whole.
I'm William Hughes of the Borderville Road. My concern is I've done some research on this and it claims it puts off a lot of radiation that causes brain cancer. Can anybody tell me just exactly how much and how dangerous it is?
I'm sorry, can you say your name again?
William. We didn't catch your last name.
Hughes.
Thank you.
I believe that's in this report, I don't know if they want to respond to that question.
It is, it is in the, there is a section here that does reference the radiation in the application for certificates of public good in the back.
But the public here needs to know, they don't have access to that.
Again, this is a meeting, so this is, this board isn't privy, this board, this is a Public Utility Commission question that they would, they would look into. This, again, this board is for comment.
The information that we receive is the same information that's on the Public Utilities website, as well as any information that was distributed to a butters. So we have the same information that's accessible to all the public as well. We don't have anything different.
They do, they stick the same, like, wanting to share. Go to them and see if they're willing to share, or maybe have extra...
Do you want to have your comments written down?
Yes, let's get out of all the comments first, because there may be, we could be bouncing back and forth here all night, and I don't want to do that, we have a little time. We'll take all this in consideration, we'll ask the questions near the end, we'll take it, fulfill us with some, because like Shaylee said, you've got the same information we have, so we don't know the specifics of these studies and stuff, as well as these folks were.
I'll, I'll go.
Say your name.
Okay, my name is Fiba Dorfman, and I live, my family is the closest house to the proposed location of this radio tower, not cell phone tower. And upon hearing about this 153-foot lattice radio tower, naturally, as a mother of two young children, I was extremely concerned. I did a lot of, I dove into research after, two months after giving birth to my second child, and found a very good, credible source, I could go into all of his credentials, but we're limited to two minutes, so I really want to get to the point. But he, he went through, he went through the same process in a, in a town in Massachusetts. He's a doctor, and he was the dean of students at SUNY State. And he recommended to the, the planning board in this town in Massachusetts, this, "While the intensity is much less than one would receive holding a cell phone to your head, the emissions from a tower are continuous. Thus, the aggregate exposure over time coming from being close to a tower can be very significant. A child living nearby or nearby the tower will be exposed every moment he or she is at home or in school. The cancer effects of exposing children will not be seen immediately, but they will be elevated risk for cancer for many years to come." And I could go on, but again, we're limited to two minutes. I then expressed my concern to Brian Sullivan in an email, and he sent back an article from the, the American Cancer Society, and this is what the article says. I went through the article, and it said, "Most expert organizations agree that more research is needed to help clarify this." In one part, in another part, it said, "More research is needed to be sure." Okay, so I don't want my children to be the study, the long-term study. We live about 500 to 700 feet away from this proposed tower. This is a radio, two-way radio tower, not a cell phone tower. And those of you who wish that it was a cell phone tower, thank you. It, we have better, smarter technology for cell phone towers. We do not need a radio tower, a 153-foot intrusive radio tower, that close to where human beings and children live. We have neighbors who have three children, and they're just 200 feet away. So when MSK, Brian Sullivan returned my, my, my email to alleviate my concerns, this is what I found, is that more research is needed. So that did not alleviate my concerns. Then, their experts, they hired experts, the, the industrial, and the expert, and I, we would have had a, a presentation to show everyone, did an incorrect analysis of where we live. And they, they, and I can just pass this around, but we don't...
Well, we'll have to be at that point, you're going to...
Okay, but we don't...
Let it true, I'll be handing it around, handed in.
Okay.
This is comment period shortly.
Okay, so their hired, hired experts are incorrect in their analyses, and it's, so am I, am I supposed to believe that all of their experts in all of their submitted content is correct, because this is incorrect? And, I mean, I just don't want my children to be the, the long-term study, we need more information. The radio lattice tower is not the only solution for cell, better cell phone and better internet in our area. Cell phone technology, all they need is an existing structure, like a silo, we have a silo, put it on a silo. The better internet is coming with fiber optics. The giant lattice radio tower is not necessary for these things. I'm all for better internet and better cell phone, trust me. I went through the last week trying to prepare for this meeting, and I didn't have internet. But that's not, we don't need a radio tower. And for my children to be the, the study, it's just not okay. We need more information. We need a public hearing at the PUC level.
Like I said, this is not a public hearing, this is a meeting.
I know, and I'm asking, I'm asking everyone who's received to submit and intervene.
Thank you for your comments.
Okay.
Name it.
This is Derek Jones. I'm a Borderville resident. Thanks for having this public commentary. So I see Ennisburg, St. Albans, the whole region at a crossroads, and the telecommunications revolution and its historic natural beauty. You, your role is an interesting one, but I just want to say a few things about some of the things we've heard, that the town has a limited or a minimal role in these decisions. I think, is Matt, not Matt, Jesse, not Jesse, Jesse. I think Sandy got a note from you yesterday that helped us in our analysis of, of the preemption by the state and the federal FCC in licensing one of these facilities. I think you read it, Mr. Chair, at the beginning, that nevertheless, the town has a role providing recommendations and comments to the PUC. And so what we're encouraging our neighbors to do is to file comments with you and the PUC, so that you can, as your town plan and your bylaws indicate, get citizen input, as we're doing today. We would ask the town to consider as well, as under the statute is permitted, to sit in on the PUC meeting, if necessary. So the recommendation can be based on town plans, which you're all familiar with, and I just got familiar with. Let me read a, a reference from the town plan. Towers and related infrastructure require careful consideration, no surprise. The need for additional facilities is projected to increase, no surprise. Is that a call, or is that a moment? The Federal Communication Act plays limitations over municipal control. However, within those confines, Ennisburg must act to protect the community's historic character, rural nature, and aesthetic beauty. Under the statute, those criteria that we just listed, aesthetic beauty, rural nature, historic character, have to be shown not to have an adverse impact on. One of our colleagues will talk about the apparent public benefit. Another colleague will talk about the impact on the site. And maybe I'll leave it at that, maybe we can come back a little later.
Okay, I'm next.
Can you state your name?
My name's Colleen Shepherd, and I live with Derek, and at the corner of Jester Arthur in Borderville, Shepherd, yes, Colleen Shepherd. And I also am very pleased to be here today, and thanks for making this opportunity possible, because as were Fiba and Derek, we're very concerned about this radio tower. And Brian Sullivan just explained that the capacity right now is as a radio, two-way radio tower. I went through the proposal that's posted on the PUC very carefully to try and figure out what the benefits might be. As a radio tower, it doesn't really explain why there's a need for a radio tower at the moment. It doesn't say anything about emergency services in the proposal, it doesn't say, it does say that the primary beneficiaries will be local businesses who use two-way radios, not the local residents. The primary thing they seem to do in the proposal is to say that in fact, it's not so much radios, but in the future, it'll be a magnet for cell phone carriers, as Brian Sullivan explained. So new cell phones will attach to this existing radio tower. Now, we have a lot of concerns with that, in that, first of all, there's no plans for any carrier, as he said, AT&amp;T, Verizon, none of them have signed up. There's no information that there will be carriers attaching to the tower, so there's no plan for immediate new cell phone coverage, which we agree is important. But secondly, we think that it really subverts or bypasses the co-location requirements for cell antenna. Currently, if you're putting up a cell antenna, you have to look at whether you can attach it to a silo or to an existing structure. And if you can, you do that. Now, what we're seeing is, they said they can't co-locate to anything because they're a radio tower, but then they're turning around and saying, "But then, we're going to be able to have cell phone antennas co-located to us." So it's like they're circumventing the co-location requirements for the cell phone. I don't know if that was clear, like, that they will attach the antenna to an existing, to another structure. So that's one thing. And secondly, on the cell phone use, in looking into this a little bit more closely, we were struck by the fact that Governor Scott has introduced this whole new funding, 51 million for new cell phone towers, to increase coverage for cell phones, everyone agrees, in rural areas across Vermont. But the process that is contemplated by those new funds that are being put into Vermont is very much community engagement. And I'll just quote, a quote from June Tierney, who is the Public Service Department Commissioner. She says, "I want to underscore that the program will have a robust public engagement process for identifying tower sites. We will partner with communities, their leadership, regional planning commissions, public safety organizations. We want to find, get input, where folks want to know about whether there's a gap, whether it will change the feel of a picnic area, let alone home. This will be, this should happen well before the tower sites are selected. This approach makes respect for the will of the community the north star of our public planning process." So it seems to me that all these public funds that are being put forward for new cell phones, which is great, that they contemplate a process where before a tower site is selected, we have a community process, and that to me seems to be consistent with the history of Vermont democracy and community engagement. I just think of the Ennisburg Electric and other historic examples where there's a long history, I think, of community engagement. And that seems to be what the governor has in mind, and certainly what June Tierney has in mind. So, and finally, on the internet, because I know my time's probably up, is the internet, there's, again, there seems to be, when I looked into it more closely, internet service, and there's a huge plan in place for expanding internet broadband services, but it's not through towers, it's through fiber cables, or whatever they're called.
What is that?
Fiber optic, I'm becoming an expert. So, in fiber optics that are attached to television, it doesn't require towers. And again, there's the whole communication unit, new districts, and community boards to make sure that that's done collectively and for the benefit of all Vermonters. So when we reviewed it in terms of radio towers, it's not clear why it's necessary. Two, cell phone, it isn't following the proper processes, even though, and three, and it'll just put money in a company from out of state, basically, who will get subsidies to pay for the tower they use. And internet, it's not necessary. So in terms of benefits, it doesn't seem to pass the public with standard. Thanks.
You can go.
All right, I'll go next. My name's Sandra Brune, and we have a house on 6913, next to the Seventh Day Adventist Church. And I just wanted to start out with reading a quote from Industrial Tower, under their criterion eight. They are, quote, "Scenic beauty, historic sites, and natural areas." It states, "This radio tower project will not have undue adverse effect on known historic sites." Specifically in regard to historic sites, Industrial stated, quote, "No historic properties in the area of potential effects-direct effects, and no historic properties in the area of potential effects-visual effects." So I just started with Googling Borderville and Ennisburg, and actually, three historic sites, two are in Borderville. One is the Seventh Day Adventist Church, which is a 166-year-old church, and it's the oldest church in its own denomination, and it was actually built as a Seventh Day Adventist Church. And the other point is Chetroy Arthur birthplace, it's on the National Historic Register. He was the 21st president. And many tours travel through Borderville, up and down our road, to go to the church, the cemetery, and also to the, to visit that historic site. The Seventh Day Adventist Church is actually .4 miles from this radio tower. It does pose adverse aesthetic effects, as well as interferes with the historical nature of our Borderville community. The other piece that I wanted to just state is the aesthetic details. So when you read the town bylaws, we have some specifics around the aesthetics and their ability to meet the requirement. And when you look at this tower, it's 140 feet plus 13 feet of antennas, and it will actually be the tallest in the region. So there's other cell sites and towers, but this is going to be the tallest one. And there could potentially be lighting requirements in the future, not only for migratory birds, but also for FAA requirements. And with the additional cell service potentially added, the tower could go up to 200 feet. So when you look at the difference and understand what a 200-foot tower would look like versus a 153, this is a big... this is a big difference. Industrial also did a balloon test at a hundred and fifty feet, three feet short of what the actual height is. And they chose the ten vantage points to see what the visual impact was. And they didn't confer with any property owners or any of the minister, the church, or any of us. And they just concluded that out of ten sites, four have visual impact. One would have been, two are on one oh eight, and two, one on Jones's Road, and then there's another location as well. So the last point is they're going to change our quiet little Bordaville country road into an industrial eighteen-foot road with a chain-link fence and hazard signs posted at the fence as well, stating that it's a dangerous area. So back to your point where you wonder, what are these, you know, issues of health? Then why would they have to post those signs saying, "Do not enter because of radiation exposure"?
Does that sign specifically say danger because of radiation exposure?
Yeah, that can send you, it's in our forward point. So in the, my conclusion really is that it's a historical vision village. It impacts a lot of homes. And if you really think about all the undeveloped rural Vermont areas, why do we have to change, choose this one spot smack dab in the middle of Bordaville's historic community? Can we find another location? Can we change the size and scope of it? Can we, you know, just make a better decision rather than rush this through? Because once we rush it through and it's approved, there's no more say. No one has any more say in this. So that's what I would add. Thank you.
Lady, straight to the chair.
I'm going to shout, just so everybody can hear me. I'm Catherine Bennett, adjoining landowner. And I think when the board considers the historical impact of the heritage of West Ennisburg, it's important to consider that there wasn't this energy or momentum put into the demolishing of the West Ennisburg, the historical West Ennisburg Methodist Church, the one-room schoolhouse that recently went down. The proposed location of the tower is centrally located between our home office and our shop. In our nineteen years of business, we have never been able to communicate at our shop at all or between the two locations. And the ability to better conduct business with our customers and communicate with employees at both locations would be of immense benefit to us. Small businesses have suffered greatly over these past few years. Something to ease the burden would be very welcome. For the past few years, our children have attended Ennisburg schools, fully or partially remotely. This proved to be a positive experience for them, and the opportunity has since presented itself that will allow our children to continue with the school model indefinitely and to attend a college, to attend college remotely as well. I don't think it needs to be stated how critical reliable access to telecommunication is for being successful at learning remotely. At best, we experience body coverage. Reliable communication access is paramount for our children's academic success. Over the past few decades, I've been witness to many accidents, emergencies, and safety concerns around the West Ennisburg area. Accessing emergency assistance remains a prominent issue on the stretch of Route one oh eight between Ennisburg and Bakersfield and to the adjoining backroads as well. This past fall, a car collided with my father while he was crossing the road on his four-wheeler on Route one oh eight. The person who found him had to leave his side during those first critical moments and raced for the nearest landline. That sole landline available was then occupied contacting nine-one-one, rendering it inability to contact other family members or someone close by who could assist while they waited for first response to arrive. Had there been coverage in that area, that call to nine-one-one would have undoubtedly been placed minutes earlier. And had my father gotten to his feet while that first person on the scene was out searching for a landline, he almost certainly would have lost his life. This one situation is a shining example of how every minute matters and how priceless our safety is. The future ability to access emergency services or even to call to let someone know that you're safe is such a comforting thought after all these years of knowing that many of our surrounding communities have had this very privilege. As you listen to comments from the community on this project, please remember that this is not a pilot project. There are similar towers dotted the countryside and farmland all around us. I encourage you to consider all aspects of potential growth and benefit that this would bring to our community and to the local emergency crews servicing our residents. We strongly feel that this project is an important step in bringing equity and opportunities and greatly needed infrastructure to and within our corner of the community. This tower will be a step towards bridging the gap. I also hope that you keep in mind that for the past century...
You need to wrap it up.
Yep, I am. For the past century, the whole family has been pivotal in establishing the way of life that others come to West Ennisburg city. I think we can all agree that no one cares for any plot of land more than those who are going to cultivate and raise their families on that land, generation after generation.
I saw another hand raised.
Yep, I did have my hand raised. My name's Tara Lombardi. I live on Bordaville Road. And I basically just wanted to echo everything that Pippa and Derek and Colleen and Sandra stated, that I don't want my small, very young children to be part of an experiment as to what living close, in close proximity to a tower of this size will do to them in the long run. I understand and echo the concerns about not having consistent cellphone and internet service. My oldest child, who is sixteen, has been going to school from home for the past three years with no issues. He's an A student. We have no, no problems with our internet connection. It's not the greatest internet connection, but down the road, we are getting better internet connection. And we don't know when this tower would actually provide any internet connection. We don't know when this tower would actually provide a cellphone connection. But we do know that the state of Vermont is working on expanding both of these projects. So I just hope that everything's taken into consideration, not mine.
My name is Mary Paul. I'm speaking on behalf of my husband and I. We are the former owners of the Daleset Farms of land we discussed for the proposed cell tower in appearance of Matthew Paul, who is the fifth generation to own this farm. We wish to support the building of a cell tower on this land for safety reasons. Matthew has thought this through. Yes, he will have a gain, but more importantly, being on the Bakersfield Fire Department and a first responder, he realizes the necessity of good cell reception in this area. The farm and we have, over the years, been asked for the use of our telephones when travelers have vehicle issues, out of gas, flat tires, mechanical problems, accidents, and drug-related incidents. Some folks are local and some are complete strangers. One incident involved a mental health case who ran out of gas in front of our house. Again, no cell reception on her phone. I did allow her to use the telephone, our telephone, to make several calls, but because of the information she was sharing with me, the authorities were notified and it was decided that she was not a threat to her cell or to others. However, I did lock my door. The public has expressed concern over the appearance of the tower above the trees. The views of the trees and the hills are beautiful in all the seasons. However, I think more concerns need to be aimed at maintaining the roadside of Bordaville and Chester Arthur. If I get hard to believe that bags of trash, dirty diapers, beer cans, old tires, broken furniture do not impact the appearance of an area. We are in complete support of this proposal for reasons of safety for travelers and residents, sincerely.
Hi, I'm Kevin Marvin. I was adjoining property on West Ennisburg Road. And I want to speak to, the property I have is two hundred acres, primarily a hunting property. I have a camp on the property. And I live in Swanton, and most of my work is consulting and using my phone and internet. And I cannot, I cannot work certainly at the location in Ennisburg. It's also, I think, in many ways, dangerous for me to be out in the woods by myself without having access to cellphone coverage. And there's a lot of woods work to be done. I think a lot of, there probably is a lot of people that do work in the woods, especially with all the sugaring in the area, that independent people in the woods, there's a lot of potential danger there. I look back to a hundred years, a hundred fifty years, maybe, I guess maybe a hundred years ago when they were putting up electric lines across the country. I wonder what people were saying then when all those poles were going up. Many more poles, much more disruption to the views than what we're seeing with the single tower. But yet, we're all reaping the benefits of having electric power and the internet access, the quick internet access we get from those power lines. And this is just another piece to add into the technology and the ability for us to do what we need to do to live in this beautiful area. So I'm very much in support of this. I, I had some property in, in another county, or actually, another town in this, in this county, in which they were putting cellphone towers in that area. And it was a cellphone tower with a gigantic road, a lot of trees cut. It was up on the top of a hill, but there was a lot of destruction that was done in terms of putting that tower in. The location of this tower, I think, is really quite amazing because it's so close to a road. There's not a whole lot of tree cutting that needs to occur, and it has good coverage of the whole valley. And it just seems to me to make a ton of sense to have that location where it's being proposed. Thank you.
I'm Charles Hungerford. I live with Pippa on the three ninety-four Bordaville Road. I've been there for, since 2014. One of the major concerns of mine going through with this, other than the eighty-by-eighty footprint right down the road, which I think is kind of just astronomical, but is the fact that they're going to be widening the road a little bit. The Bordaville Road in the summertime is already a shortcut and is not posted. Going to safety, this is going to create access to, through traffic, potentially three hundred and sixty-five days a year. Because they're going to have to have access from both sides of the road to access the compound. It's already, people already try to go down it in the winter and they go off in the culver. And Matt even knows, he has to pull people out sometimes, it's a pain in the butt. It's like, it's a crazy situation. It's already a posted road, or it's not a posted road, and people just are flying through there all the time. And I feel that with the proposed expansion of the road, that it's going to create more traffic, making it actually less safe for the people who actually are on the road three hundred and sixty-five days a year. It's just going to influence a lot of reckless behavior, I feel, from the community. It's already being used as a, as a shortcut in the, in the summertime, and it's, I mean, people fly by our house fifty, fifty-five miles an hour already. And I'm just nervous with children, and even with my older children, who experienced it when we were, when they were still around, hanging out. People just are back and forth up the road all summer long, super fast. So that's my major concern about the added footprint to the road, honestly.
My name is Deborah Hastings, and I live on Chester Arthur Road. Again, I'm, I'm concerned, I, I don't think anyone has disagreement about improved cell coverage or improved emergency services or cell line recovery. I think the concern is putting this in a very tight little neighborhood where many of the houses are right on the road, very, very close to the road. Children living in the area, I just think it warrants more investigation into citing it in a different location or, or making it shorter, citing it further back from the road.
My name's Eric Hall. I have joined, land on said communications power property proposals. I too have children that will be growing up in the immediate area of the tower closed. But I come with a little bit different, different perspective. I was a member of the Bakersfield Fire Department for fifteen years, volunteer. And not a single day went by where the struggles of receiving pages and receiving these calls for these emergency scenarios was not a struggle. Very many times it happened where close by proximity people did not receive notifications for the department's calls to get to the said calls, where minutes matter, time matters. This tower does present capabilities of increasing Bakersfield's capabilities of response as well as Ennisburg and Bakersfield's communication capabilities where there is no communication as of right now. I have been in a scenario where I have been injured, as well as family members who. I have been injured to the point where medical necessity, without necessary medical attention, I would not be here today. And it was as a result of the fact that I was lucky enough to be injured where there was coverage of said medical treatments. I do have concerns for my children, but then again, I also have experienced times where I have been unable to be, I've been in the woods where I have been able to be unavailable. And my children have had to go to the doctors or go to the hospital where we have had no communication whatsoever. And my children have had to go for medical emergencies without me or my wife being able to be there because we were unable to be reached. She was at work and I was unavailable. So there is, to me, as an adjoining landlord, I believe that there are some benefits that this town needs to realize. Well, benefits that I perceive this town.
Anybody else?
Can we add anything else if we already went?
I'm sure everybody else has an opportunity before we go any further.
Yeah, hi, my name is Cicely Crave. I live in Bakersfield, so I'm not technically a local. I don't own the property. But I do share all of the concerns we've heard about access to emergency services. We had an accident in Bakersfield just last week where a woman, fortunately her partner was able to flag down a car and get her the services she needed because he could not reach 911 on his cellphone. Like many others, I work from home, so internet access is critical. And it's not the best in Bakersfield. So I don't want to reiterate and go over everything we said, but I am really interested in seeing this tower go ahead.
I'd like to reiterate that it's not a guaranteed. Your name is Cyrus House. I'm an adjoining landlord on Borderville Road. I would just like to also address or echo the concerns of our community about the safety of the tower, the safety of the road. The widening of the road will increase traffic. As well as the maintenance of the road, if that's going to increase tax burden on local residents, while it also lowers our property values. Also, it's not necessarily guaranteed. At the moment, it's only a regular tower. So there's no guarantees that any cellphone companies are going to contract on to improve cell coverage in that area or for internet. And, oh, sorry, one more thing. I feel like they've only looked at and selected this one site. And I think in some ways it could be good for the community, but there's probably lots of other sites that could be explored that are not within a couple hundred feet of different families' houses, even within the whole property. It might sort of address everybody's feelings if there is an alternate site selected.
Anybody else that hasn't spoke? Now, before we ask for any more comments, there was a question earlier we were going to ask. Brian, it was the radiation question. I don't know if there's any other questions. Probably ask him a couple of comments on that for three, four minutes.
I do want to know how long, how many signs, how it's going to be posted. If it does, if it does end up like coming, like is, where is the signage to be posted?
What are you talking about posted?
Like there must be signage that has to be posted to, to warn, to warn people of the FCC radiation. So there must have to be some postage of signs that say like, it's, this may or may not violate FCC code. I would like to know how far those signs are going to be. If they're going to be right across the street from our house, that, that even makes us even more, it makes it even more concerning in a way. If, you know, I'm just saying.
Well, there's those couple of questions, the property postage and radiation question. I don't know if we can give you a few minutes here. You want to discuss any comments on that?
Four. I'm going to ask three different people to respond to different points that were raised by the public comments. First, I'm going to ask Don Hayes to respond to the question and concerns about exposures to radiation as well as the required signage. I'm going to ask Kevin Delaney to talk about industrial's efforts to co-locate on existing structures. And I'm going to ask Louis Hodges to respond specifically to intentions about increasing the width of Borderville Road. Compound size and the effect on historic resources. So I think since radiation seemed to be the first concern that was raised, I'm going to ask Don Hayes to address that now.
Can I just ask, if you can do it, three, four minutes each. We're coming down the last 15 minutes or so of the meeting, so if you have any final comments, if you want to have them after your responses.
Yes, I hope everybody can hear me. I believe I'm unmuted. So my name is Don Hayes. I'm an independent consultant that has over 30 years experience working with towers and cellular communications. In fact, I'm one of the people that wrote the ANSI standard on what the signs should look like and where they should be posted. So I'm certainly appropriate person to ask about that. As far as the, the potential RF emissions. For this particular site, what I did is I looked at a theoretical loading. In other words, I looked at what the proposed loading would be with industrial wireless, industrial tower and wireless. And I also looked at what it would be if they added up to, let's see, one, two, three, four, five cellular providers as well. And in doing these calculations, I used the formulas provided and suggested by the FCC. And what I found was the highest possible exposure would be considering a full loading, that is, everybody on the tower and including the five cellular industrial wireless, a couple of whip antennas. And if everything is pointed in the same direction, it would be about five and a half percent of the allowable exposure. Now, when I do these theoretical predictions, I've had many opportunities to go out afterwards and perform measurements to make a comparison between what I predict and, and what we actually see in the field. And there are two towers in Massachusetts that I've, that I have data for just about annual measurements over the last 30 years. And they have yet to go above what I predicted 30 years ago. And so I, I have a lot of confidence in the FCC's formulas and my ability to use them. In reference to what was mentioned about my report being an error because it, it didn't have the correct home. I apologize that, that somebody thought that this was aimed at a particular home. It's not. The second report or my addendum is really designed to look at a particular azimuth or a, a direction on the planet. And it's obvious that I haven't looked at any type of exposure in a home because I didn't take into account any type of attenuation to building. So this was just an addendum to look at any variations in ground elevation that would indicate that my calculations are inaccurate. And in fact, I, I think it more or less bolsters it. Lastly, as far as the signs. The signs are as follows. If you can exceed the public exposure, which on the ground you cannot, then you would need to have what's called an RF notice sign. And what that does is that just provides a notice that the fields could exceed those allowed by the general public, which means in order to proceed beyond that area, you would be required to have training in radio frequency safety. So that sign would go at the base of the tower. In other words, where you could actually climb up the tower to get nearer the antennas. Remember that the tower and the antenna are two different things. The antennas are things like, like this here that are mounted up on the tower. Okay? If you can exceed the worker limit, which is five times higher than the public limit, then that requires a caution sign. And then the caution sign would be placed up near the antennas. Now practically, you don't want somebody to climb 100 and some odd feet up a tower and then all of a sudden see a caution sign and realize they have to come back down and not get the job done. So a lot of people take a shortcut and put the caution sign at the bottom of the tower. But, but there, there is no danger sign necessary for the radiation because there is no danger from the radiation. Danger being defined by OSHA, not defined by people in general.
Thank you, Don. I want to move on to Kevin Delaney now to talk about what industrial did to try and co-locate this facility on existing structures and also to respond to a comment about the tower potentially needing to be lit. Could you address those points, please, Kevin?
Sure, I'd be happy to. First of all, we did review all the existing structures within a 10-mile radius. And there's actually only two existing towers within a 10-mile radius. So one of them is in, in Ennisburg, it's existing Monopine Tower that Verizon Wireless is located on. That site's just a little over five miles away and it just doesn't provide the coverage needed to fill the gap. The next site was in Sheldon, neighboring town in Sheldon. And that site was just about seven miles away. And again, it just does not provide the coverage to the, the gap area where we need to provide coverage for both ourselves as well as the future carriers such as, you know, your Verizons, AT&amp;T, T-Mobile, US Cellular and Dish Network. There's some other sites like church steeples that were mentioned tonight. The type of technology that, that we provide, we can't fit our antennas into church steeple. They're just too large to be able to do that because of the, the technology. And we need Omni whips and they're about 13 feet in length. And we need separation between the transmit and the receive antennas. So we're not able to locate our type of antennas in, in that type of atmosphere as well as silos. There's just not enough room in silos to fit our antennas. And the second question that was asked, I'm sorry, what did you mention? Brian was the second one?
The second question was somebody commented that the tower might need to have lights on it.
Oh, sorry, yeah. So with regard to the lighting, our towers do not require lighting. It's regulated by the FAA. And anything that's over 200 feet requires lighting. So it could either be a red blinking light at the top or a strobe light. Because our tower itself is 140 feet total in the, the steel of the tower. And then above the steel of the tower is another 13 feet, which is the Omni whip antennas. So it's a total of the tower plus the antenna is 153 feet. And because that's below the 200-feet ceiling required by the FAA, there will be no lighting required. And we'll have a, what's called a determination of no hazard from the FAA that will confirm that.
One last, one last comment, or if we could. I'm going to ask Louis Hodges to address a couple of points that people raised having to do with the alleged widening of the road, of the size of the compound and, and the composition of the compound. And finally, effect on historic resources. So Louis, could you address those three points, please?
Yes, I'm sorry, my video is not working currently. The first comment on the work on Borderville Road. We posing any road improvements to Borderville Road? Proposed project uses Borderville Road as it is currently, with the exception that we have contacted Ennisburg Lightning Electric about running additional overhead pipelines to service the that will require a line extension from the Route 108 side up to thing driveway to the, the tower location. At that point where we tie off, where we come off from Borderville Road through the existing, there's an existing camp road and it goes to the, the field. That is, but is proposed as being widened to allow for concrete trucks, maintenance vehicles, dump trucks, a crane to set the equipment. But as I, as I said, there's no intention to do any road improvements to Borderville Road. We are not looking to adjust the class four status of that road. Any servicing in the future. The usually use all terrain vehicles, four-wheel drive vehicles. We would not be asking the town to, to plow Borderville Road for maintenance operations in the future. Then was the second topic?
I thought I heard, and I have to apologize because I haven't heard everything perfectly, but I thought I heard a comment that suggested that people thought the entire compound is going to be paved. And I was just hoping you could address that.
So as we've designed it currently, the road off from Borderville Road the existing gravel driveway to be 14 feet wide. Just looking at my plans right now.
We're losing some of your audio, Louis.
Sorry. The roads of, the driveway is going to be 560 feet long to an 80 by 80 gravel crushed stone surface compound where the tower is going to be located. That for the carriers to install their own equipment cabinets within that existing compound, so it doesn't need to be extended in the future. That is a couple hundred feet off from Borderville Road. There is some existing in between the tower compound and Borderville Road, kind of limiting the views of the tower compound itself. There is clearing that you may see part of it as you're driving down the road, but the views will be pretty minimal of the tower compound from Borderville Road.
Okay, and then the last point was some of the commenters spoke about impacts on historic buildings and historic resources. Could you please tell the commission and the members of the public what's been done to study that?
So as this is a telecommunications tower that is licensed by, or has the potential to be licensed or used by FCC licensed carriers. We hired to complete a National Environmental Policy Act and a Section 106 review of the National Historic Preservation Act. In that analysis, there's a number of criteria that are evaluated from environmental impacts, including wetlands and habitat. And then a natural, or National Historic Preservation Act, which requires evaluating the proposed tower structure within a quarter mile, half mile radius for impacts to national historic properties. That is done through a consulting firm that we contracted with. They did a very thorough evaluation, prepared a report, which is in our application. That report was submitted to the state historic preservation office where they do it and evaluate and ensure that consultant met all the criteria. And they have provided concurrence that there is no adverse effect to historic properties within the vicinity of the project.
Thank you, Louis. I see we're getting close to 7:15, so I'd just like to wrap it up with a couple of closing comments. First, we heard reference to the governor's plan to try to build more towers and the allocation of a significant amount of money to do that. This project is not part of that initiative. Industrial started on this before that was proposed or approved, and there are no public funds, no taxpayer money going to finance this. And then finally, we've heard a lot about the important issue of having reliable emergency service communications. I should mention that the service that industrial offers, its 900 megahertz network, can be used. And those types of networks have been used by first responders throughout the country. And then finally, on that point, it is possible that the first responders in the area might want to keep their own radio system, but they might look for a place to put a repeater up to extend their coverage. And this tower would provide the opportunity for that repeater to be placed. So with that, I think we've almost come to 7:15. I want to thank the board and the members of the public for their time and their interest in the project.
Brian, you mentioned that this is not part of the governor's plan, is that this project started before that? Approximately what timeframe are we looking at at the beginning of this project?
Well, I got involved with it around the first of this year, but I'm only brought in once it's progressed to a certain point. Probably Kevin could tell us exactly when industrial started the planning process for it.
Are you still on?
Yeah, I'm sorry about that, Brian. Yeah, we started looking in the area in the like December timeframe, November, December timeframe.
Of last year?
Yes.
Thank you. At this time, we're right near the limit. Really strictly comments, there's a few brief ones, we'll take one or two more, but we are going beyond our time at this point. And we're all here gathered. If anybody has not spoken and really wants to at this point, invite you to do so right now. If not, we'll take one or two other comments.
No, I just had a clarification because, and they kept a lot of time, the industrial and tower, they had a big time to present.
There's four of them. Eight to ten minutes.
I just wanted to say though, that the, the new initiative is for cellular service, to increase cellular service. It's not for radio towers precisely. Radio towers could co-locate to them, but it's
You're talking about the governor's plan.
The governor's plan. Then the plan will provide funds to cell companies to attach to the tower. So it may well be that industrial's tower benefits indirectly because cellphone companies will get funds to help them attach to the tower. So those funds, those subsidies will then go to, to help the profitability of industrial tower miles. So I just want to clarify that.
If, if there's no adverse health effects on people, then why did New Hampshire just pass a House Bill 1644? It's a legislature voted to send historic legislation on cell tower radiation to interim study after hearing extensive testimony regarding the health effects of cell tower radiation. House Bill 1644 was sent to interim study on a 245, 104 vote. The bill would establish a setback of 1,640 feet for cellular antennas and creates an online registry for people who are injured by wireless antennas. This bill follows recommendations of the New Hampshire State Commission on 5G Health and Environment, which issued a landmark final report in 2020 recommending a 1,640-foot setback for cell towers. Like that's, that, my house is 500, 600 feet from this.
Well, I cannot respond to what New Hampshire is doing, and like I said, this is just comments to the planning and select board.
I know, I've heard.
Any more information like that, you can forward it to us. We can delve into it when we have time.
Thank you. And thank you for having us tonight. I appreciate it and hearing us out. And I just urge you to maybe post our, our concerns to the PUC website as our, as our elect, our town elects to, to honor that and post our concerns, please.
All right, two more, real brief, real brief.
I just, I just want to, please. I just wanted to recommend that you look at the, the state website has some recommendations for towns on how to assess the value of a cell tower and tax that. So there is opportunity for additional revenue to, to everybody with regards to this contract and this power.
So I would, and we'll write this to you.
Could you state your, that was Kevin and Derek.
We would invite the commission and the town to write, considerate the comments to the PUC on what you've heard here and what they follow in writing. Other towns have had these discussions, and it's not necessarily a case that they all be unanimous. There can be differing views, but the point is that the PUC needs to hear the version or uniform views for citizen participation. And I would secondly urge you to do so on the basis of your already stated bylaws and town plans. Because as Jesse, Jesse mentioned, your recommendations, comments and questions will be given substantial deference by the PUC. Meaning that if you want to participate in the PUC upcoming meeting, you can do so. Meaning that if you say there are mixed views on this, but one thing is unanimous, deciding is questionable. If Bakersfield has poor gaps in its, in its public safety date, that raises regional questions. We haven't heard anything about, and it's important because both Bakerfield and Ennisburg are partners in a CUD.
Communication union system.
That is a profit, nonprofit initiative that would probably outpace the top, internet towers. In your bylaws, a tower that is erected has to have certain insurance, has to have certain decommission issues. Those need to be addressed. It could be, judging all your information, it could be that you would condition, you would recommend that this be conditioned on a setback of 500 feet lower towers, new site. It wouldn't be visible from all of Borderville. It'd be safe and healthy, and it would increase the purported benefits of this. And finally, if it's a cell, cell tower, an internet tower, a radio tower, the document does not go through in any detail the particulars of what specific towers around it consider on individual basis for cellphone, for internet, for radio. All it says is that our technology won't fit on top of a church. That's not the standard. That's not the standard in Northwest Community Planning, or step of Ennisburg, not the standard of the Public Utility Commission. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all for your time and stability. You know, this is here to everyone's livelihoods, the whole forum against this. At this time, we were going to delve into the executive session portion of the meeting. And thank you all for your time, plenty of comments.